Good evening and welcome to the August 16th, 2023 Roseville City Council Meeting. I'll call the meeting in order and ask the clerk to read the roll, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start off with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Here.
Councilmember Elverd.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Haddashelt.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll ask the clerk to an, oh, wait, no, I won't. I'll ask Mr. McMillan. McMillan. Who is from Oakmont and attended Boise State, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Everyone, please place your hands over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will ask the city clerk to announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 16th City of Roseville City, regular City Council Meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on the city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to any staff member or the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For comments on non-agenda items, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item not listed on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our City Council. Public comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The collective initial time period for this section is 25 minutes. Any speaker that did not get the opportunity to speak during this segment due to time limitations will be able to speak at the end of the meeting prior to the council comments. Please be advised that the Brown Act does prohibit the City Council from taking action, discussing, or debating items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For comments on agendized items, speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item that's appearing on the agenda. Time will be monitored, and once the red light blinks at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. Thank you for your civic participation tonight, and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you very much. We'll move now to public comments on non-agenda items. This is a time and place. If you want to make a public comment about something that is not already agendized, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move to special requests, reports, and presentations. No, we won't. Well, we'll go to the consent. I'm just leaping ahead, sorry. These glasses adjusted. We'll go to the consent calendar.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. So consent calendar items, all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussion on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council staff or a member of the public requests that a specific item be pulled for further discussion. At this time, neither council or staff has made such a request. However, we did receive a request to pull item 6.10 for discussion tonight from a member of the public. Is there any other member of the public that would like to pull another item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Mayor, we do have items 6.1 through 6.9 and items 6.11 through 6.27 for council consideration and approval tonight. If I can please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call for approval with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddashelt.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to item 6.10 that was requested to be pulled.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have a staff presentation, but I do believe we have a member of GSAC in the audience, and I think I saw Mr. Broome trying to get in.
Item 6.10 is a Greater Sacramento Economic Council Economic Development Agreement and expenditure of membership funds for fiscal year 2023.
Read slower so Mr. Broome can get in.
For fiscal year 2023-24. Again, this is item 6.10.
He's not even in the lobby.
Come on, guys.
You sure it was him?
He's on the phone.
Economic Development Director is approaching the.
Yeah, maybe.
Oh, yes. So item 7.1 is the Pleasant Grove Boulevard widening, adoption of the subsequent in initial study mitigated negative deck, adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, project approval, approval of plans and specifications, and authorization to call for bids. And we have with us Stephanie Ke- Kemen. Something. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor.
To give us a report.
Waiting for presentation. Cue up for a second.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Haddashelt and members of the council. My name is Stephanie Keeman, as the mayor just stated, and I'm the Public Works Engineering Division Manager. I'm here tonight filling in for our director, Jason Shikowski. I'm pleased to bring before you tonight a request to approve the Pleasant Grove Boulevard widening project description, its environmental document, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and the plans and specifications, along with a request to authorize staff to bid the project for construction. Approval of these items tonight would be the completion of a major milestone in widening Pleasant Grove Boulevard from Foothills to Wood Creek Oaks. Joining me to share the details of the environmental document is Mark Morse with Ecor Consulting. The project before you tonight will widen Pleasant Grove Boulevard from an existing four to ultimately six travel lanes through its intersections with Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard and Foothills Boulevard. The project will also rehabilitate the pavement along the roadway segment. The widening will primarily occur to the interior roadway medians as shown in the section drawing on the screen. This is similar to how we have recently widened other arterial roadways throughout the city such as Wood Creek Oaks in 2017 and Blue Oaks in 2014. Similar to those in other projects like these, staff have worked closely with the city's arborist and our consultant arborist to retain as many of the existing median trees and landscaping as possible. There are 65 trees through the corridor, 20 of which will be preserved in place. Forty-six new trees will be planted for a net increase of one additional tree, and the project will pay into the city's tree mitigation fund. The project will implement improvements as originally set forth in the Northwest Roseville specific plan adopted by council in 1989, reaffirmed by the adoption of the 2035 general plan, and in compliance with current city design standards. This does include restricting left turns onto Pleasant Grove Boulevard at minor residential streets as these intersections were never planned to be signalized and city standards do not allow uncontrolled left turns across three lanes of traffic. On the eastern limit of the project, Pleasant Grove Boulevard will be widened to the north to accommodate an additional through lane, and this improvement does require a small bit of additional right-of-way acquisition. Also, storage for left turns to the southbound Foothills Boulevard will be increased. Additional improvements include traffic signal modifications at Wood Creek Oaks, Country Club, and Foothills, installation of various underground infrastructure to support the future Mistywood ASR well site for our own Environmental Utilities Department, and rehabilitation of the roadway segment, which was last resurfaced in 2016. I will now hand it off to Mark Morse with Ecor Consulting to go over information from the project's environmental document.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, council members. Again, I'm Mark Morse, Senior Project Manager at Ecor Consulting. Ecor served as the city's environmental consultant for preparation of the environmental document tonight. There's actually two documents that we prepared for Sequo compliance, a subsequent initial study mitigated negative declaration, or an ISMND, as we call it, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or a MMRP. In this case, the subsequent ISMND tears from the programmatic analysis contained in the City of Roseville 2035 General Plan EIR and provides a project-level analysis of the proposed improvements. The mitigation monitoring and reporting plan lists all recommended mitigation measures and identifies implementation and monitoring responsibilities for compliance tracking. Public involvement during Sequo included a community open house on April 27th of last year, followed by release of the draft environmental document for a 30-day public review period, which ran from December, I'm sorry, November 7th to December 9th of last year. And while we did receive comments requesting confirmation of proposed improvements and future operational aspects of the project, including comments addressing restriction of left turns out of side-street stop-sign-controlled intersections, there were no comments that addressed the adequacy of the environmental analysis, and all comments received are contained and responded to in the final environmental document. This slide summarizes the project's impacts and mitigation measures real quick. The initial study analyzed 18 issue areas and found that potentially significant impacts could occur to three. Those are biological resources, geology and soils, and cultural resources. For biology, the project was found to result in potential impacts to nesting birds and bats during construction. These impacts are mitigated by mitigation measures Bio-1 and Bio-2, which call for either construction during the non-breeding season or to conduct pre-construction surveys for nesting birds and raptors and bats. For geology and soils, the project was found to result in a potential impact to paleontological resources, and this impact is addressed by mitigation measure GO-1, which requires paleontological monitoring where project excavations would exceed nine feet. And for the issue of tribal cultural resources, the unanticipated discovery of buried tribal cultural resources is identified as a potential impact, and that impact is addressed by mitigation measure TCR-1, which requires work be stopped and the appropriate Native American tribe be consulted should an unanticipated discovery occur. Now, because all of the project impacts can be mitigated to less than significant by these measures, tonight, staff's recommendation is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. And that is a quick summary of the environmental findings.
Thanks, Mark. A range of public engagement occurred during the development of the project plans, including but not limited to a community open house at the Martha Riley Library in April of 2022, creation of a dedicated city website with FAQs, and a video describing the improvements and project benefits was released to the public on various city social media channels and newsletters. There was also news coverage about this project. Mailers were sent to all businesses and residences within the area highlighted, informing of the community open house and the environmental document review and comment period. Approval tonight will allow us to bid the project this fall and awards soon after. It's anticipated then construction would occur all through next year and be completed by this time next year. And so to summarize staff's recommendations, we are recommending tonight that the council adopt the subsequent ISMND and MMRP for the Pleasant Grove Boulevard widening project, approve the plant, the project as described within that document, approve the plans and specifications, and authorize staff to call for bids. And this concludes our presentation, and we, along with other project team members, are here to answer any questions in my half.
Counsel, have any questions on staff's presentation?
Exciting, longer waited. Very good.
1989 was a couple of days ago. Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. When it comes to the last item regarding bids, what does the city anticipate in terms of how many responses? I know we've talked to city manager about it this week in terms of even costs that are coming in, you know, higher than anticipated. How have you accommodated for that, or what are your thoughts when it comes to expecting the bids?
Yeah, we've had two recent projects bid, and one was substantially under and one was substantially over the engineer's estimate. So we are working with our consultant, our design consultant, to look at all of the bid prices received over the last month and make sure our estimate is in alignment with what current bid prices are coming in at.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Elverd.
My understanding is the only real negative from the neighborhood was though not being able to make left-hand turns out of those two neighborhoods. Is there's no way we can accommodate a suicide lane or something in the middle? Bad term, but.
No, I think you appropriately characterize it.
Yes, so the project is designed, as has been laid out in all the other past prior approved city approvals. So you're correct, that was the primary concern that we received from the residents. We have had that as an FAQ, kind of the procedures that residents could go through to install a traffic signal, but for private subdivisions, traffic signals are typically paid for and designed and constructed at the time of the development. So there is a procedure for installing one, I believe, only, the only one that is greater than 1,000 feet from an existing signal would be at La Porte and Hemingway, and so that is something that staff could, you know, if that neighborhood came together and wanted to install a traffic signal, we could work with them, but.
What are the nearest U-turn areas? So if they need to turn left, they have to turn right, and how far up each direction? Is it Wood Creek and Foothill, or is there anything closer they could do a U-turn on?
Wood Creek Oaks and also at Country Club. So it's not very far, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mendoza or Rakucci?
No questions at this time.
No questions.
We'll open it up for public comment. And we'll, oh, we'll close the public comment. I apologize. I had a question there. I forgot. So we have an aquifer storage and recovery well near this expansion.
Yes.
That was, that was analyzed during this process about potential impacts on that?
We worked with the Environmental Utilities Department to make sure that the future needs for their ASR well location were incorporated into this project so that they're not tearing into the new road when they need to do that installation, so.
Thank you very much. All right, unless the council has any additional questions or comments?
No.
Then I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.1, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-345, adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Pleasant Grove Boulevard widening project, and approving the project described therein, and approving the plans and specifications, and authorizing staff to call for bids. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddashelt.
Yes, and now we'll return to the item that was pulled from the consent calendar. Item 6.10, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council Economic Development Agreements and expenditure of membership funds. And Mr. Broome, you're here.
Thank you, council. City manager. Yeah, I was held by security, so otherwise, I apologize. So when I wanted to come and say thank you, because I haven't had a chance to be in front of council for a while, so I want to thank you for your continued support. I think what's going on with like the Roseville Innovation Lab, and obviously now that we have Bosch into the market, we already have a couple of suppliers. We're kind of in a unique and rare instance where we can really elevate and go to the next level. So we'll be doing more on foreign direct investment and international. One of the things that we'll be working on is a supply chain strategy with Bosch, hopefully keeping their suppliers in Roseville, at least in the Placer County community. So one of the things that I was talking with Dominic about, and I just wanted to kind of broach the subject publicly, it's going to be really important for us to kind of continue to sophisticate our board. So one of the things we're asking for support on is to encourage Bosch to take a board seat at GSAC. I think having their lead engineer on our board is going to help us connect the engineering programs. So we were going to ask you to help advocate for that a little bit. I know the vice mayor's on our, on our board, so I just wanted to let that out there as a, something like a Californian. I just wanted to socialize that conversation here tonight. And, and we're also going to be building some foreign direct investment efforts of going into Germany. And I would like us to think about maybe possibly attending as a delegation in the future. And with Luke Wood coming online, I'd recommend that we sit down and talk to the new president of SAC State, because he's been talking to me about the Placer County location for the Cal State School. He's very bullish on that. He's also very bullish on getting this innovation center off the ground, this California Mobility Center, and, you know, that's one of the reasons we're going to need Bosch's help, is we have world-class German engineers. This innovation platform that I think I've been working on since 1982, I now know how long projects take, but I've literally been working on it about six years. But, you know, it's a high-tech engineering platform that'll create a prototyping and design relationship between companies like Bosch, Sacramento State, UC Davis, maybe William Jessup, and then workforce engagements with Sierra College, very commonly seen in the Midwest and the East, not so much on the West. So we've made a lot of progress on that. We have applied for $75 million for the CHIPS Act. Congressman Doris Matt-Siwi has been a leader on that. Congressman Kylie's been helpful to us. So I think we're going to have a chance to really build an economic empire around this Bosch announcement, and I know it's brought great stability to Roseville. So I just wanted to come and thank you for the support. You know, would want to keep mindful that we want this company to be engaged in leadership. Once they're engaged in leadership, the door to Germany is going to open up, and we're going to need your help with that, because otherwise, I got to convince some Germans of $100 billion company in Berlin to do it, and I have found those to be long hurdles. But I think, I think as an interface with the community, they'll be comfortable to it. So I want to thank you for your support. 28 to 1 return. Obviously, we already have a supplier from Bosch in the market, so I think it's going to be a very exciting period for our community. And, and, you know, California's going to go through a very interesting challenge. We're looking at the economic data in San Francisco. It's stunning, stunning to the negative. You know, some hard lessons I think are coming across to a lot of people's desks. The Los Angeles market isn't looking much better. So our region's going to outperform California in the US into 2033 in our trajectory. We've, we've increased our, our industry position. We've grown it by 13% since 2017, 2005 to 2015. It contracted 5%. So with the, you know, the great support from Roseville and other Placer County communities regionally, if we work hard, we can really move the needle. And I really want us to become an industry leader on this technology side. So we're going to need to build this innovation center at SAC State to be a leader on the technology side. We're going to need Bosch to be a leader on these things as well. And I think it's going to require the encouragement of the mayor and council, and I know I've talked with the city manager. So I wanted to come by and thank, have a small ask, and, you know, congratulate you on all your great work and, and let you know how much we appreciate your support. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Broome. This item is both the GSAC and the Roseville Area Chamber annual. Is there anyone from the Roseville Area Council, Area Chamber of Commerce here on this item? I mean, this item is focused narrowly on contribution of annual, annual membership dues, so unless there's any, I'll ask the council if they have any questions regarding this? Nope. All right. I'll open it for public comment. Close public comment. Unless there's any additional questions, we'll just take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, at this time, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-330, approving an agreement by and between the City of Roseville and the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. If I can have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor with a second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Elverd. Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haddashelt.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Broome. We'll now return to the regular agenda and item 7.2, council discretionary funds for the Gathering Inn.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this item. The catering company I own is providing charcuterie and appetizers for this event.
Okay.
So thank you. The record will affect that Councilmember Mendoza will be exiting the room and not participating on this item 7.2 for the Gathering Inn.
All right, we'll take staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The City Council received a request for discretionary funds for sponsorship from the Gathering Inn for their fourth annual Gathering of Hope event. for their fourth annual Gathering of Hope event. The event is scheduled to take place on November 17, 2023. The Gathering Inn is known to be a multifaceted, multi-location agency, serving over 200 homeless men, women, and children every day in Placer County. The amount that is being requested is $3,000. It is my understanding that Mr. Mike Lukin from the Gathering Inn, board member and interim city manager for Colfax, is present tonight should the council have any questions, and there is currently no fiscal impact to the city's general fund. That concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
I'll ask the council if they have any questions about staff's presentation.
No.
Last year, didn't we give $3,000?
Did we give $3,000 last year?
I'm not sure.
Yes, we did.
I thought it was, okay.
Yeah, last year we gave, all right, I'll open for public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am Darlene Calvin, Senior Director of Development for the Gathering Inn. I would like to invite the City of Roseville to attend the Gathering Inn's annual fundraiser and awareness-building event, the Gathering for Hope, in November. Your attendance is so highly valued, as always, because our partnership with you and the City of Roseville is so highly valued. Thank you for your belief in our mission, which is meeting people where they are, inspiring hope, and walking alongside them on their journey to sustainable housing. Your alignment with this mission means so much to our organization, as well as to me personally. I know you'll be thrilled to hear of a recent achievement within our South Placer Emergency Shelter. Last month, nine guests from the Roseville Shelter achieved sustainable housing. This included both individuals as well as families. Along with all of our guests receiving the supportive services that include case management, life skill classes, mental wellness, wraparound supportive services that meet their basic needs, along with food, shelter, clothing. This year, I believe your support of alignment with our mission will be demonstrated profoundly as you participate, hopefully as a sponsor and attend the Gathering for Hope on November 17. This is why I'm asking that you would consider distinguishing yourself this year as a sponsor of $3,000 in celebration of new beginnings and hope for all in our vibrant city of Roseville.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Mike Lukin, representing the Board of Directors for the Gathering Inn. And Darlene said it pretty, actually very well, but just to add on to that, you know, this event, the Gathering of Hope, is one of the ways that we leverage a tremendous amount of private sector assistance and participation in meeting our needs of the unhoused population in Placer County. Our organization is different because we greatly involve the private sector in providing those services in addition to the public sector in the county. And your participation is pivotal to send a sign to the private sector that this is a very important matter for our county as we move forward. So just thank you very much for your consideration tonight, and our hope is that you continue to be a sponsor of the Gathering Inn through this event. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? All right, I'll close public comment. Inquire if the council has questions or comments. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.2, the City Council will consider approving council discretionary funds for the Gathering Inn in the amount of $3,000. If I can get a motion to approve, please?
Still moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Yes.
Thank you, the record reflect once again that Councilmember Mendonza did not participate in the discussion or the vote on this matter.
Councilmember Mendonza back. All right, our next, let me give Councilmember Mendonza a moment. All right, our next item is item 7.3, Exploratory Work Experience Education Program Cooperative Vocational Education Agreement. And it's, I know Stacy Peterson, but I can pronounce that. Julia?
Julia.
Julia Teresova, HR intern, and Terry Griffin, our coordinator of work-based learning with the high school district, to make the presentation.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Haldashell. I'm Stacy Peterson, and good evening, council members also. I'm Stacy Peterson, Human Resources Director for the city. And certainly this evening, we're very pleased to be able to share with you how the Human Resources Department is partnering with the Roseville Joint Union High School District on offering internships. We certainly work with a lot of our different departments to make sure those internship experiences are available to help develop the next generation of public sector employees. We also wanted to take this opportunity to present because we want to make sure the community and our local business owners are aware of these internship opportunities. There was actually unmet need this year for our high school students, so there was a lot more interest than there were opportunities. So with that said, our presenters this evening, it's going to be Julia Teresova, who is our HR intern. She's been working in the Human Resources Department since 2018 while she's going through her college program. And certainly next to Julia, as Mayor Haldashell shared, Terry Griffin. She is the coordinator of work-based learning with the Roseville Joint Union High School District, and she has been partnering with the Human Resources Department and City of Roseville since 2017. So we have a great partnership, great work that's happening for our youth, and so with that, I'll turn it over to Julia.
Thank you, Stacy. Good evening, Mayor Haldashell and esteemed council members. As Stacy mentioned, my name is Julia Teresova, and currently I'm interning at the HR department. It has been an incredible experience allowing me to go to school, gain professional experience, serve in various leadership roles across the state, and give back to my community that now I call home. I would like to share a little bit of my story with the council to highlight why internships are important for students like me, as well as to share the current accomplishments we have due to this agreement. The first time I learned about the state's Exploratory Work Experience Education Program, I was a few weeks into attending Roseville High, so go Tigers. Today, many students in our community may now recognize it as Career Technical Education, or CTE for short. Unfortunately, due to my family's recent move to the United States, my parents were hesitant to enroll me in the program and wanted me to focus on English second language course. However, each morning, as I passed by Washington Boulevard and Oak Street Roundabout, I had a clear view of the Civic Center and knew deep down in my heart that I wanted to work here. The opportunity finally arose a few years later when an intern position was posted. During my interview, city manager Casey mentioned the city's goal to establish and expand an internship program, and that stuck with me. In February 2020, I assisted with preparation of the first cooperative vocational education agreement with Roseville Joint Union High School District that was approved by the city council. This agreement aimed to provide students with unpaid internship opportunities, allowing them to gain valuable hands-on experience that complemented their school curriculum. Unfortunately, these efforts were put on hold due to the pandemic. In 2022, we reconnected with Terry and were able to offer internships to a few high school students during the spring 2023 semester. And now, I would like to showcase a video created by one of our talented high school students, Catalina Diaz, who was initially part of the CTE program and now continues working for the city as college intern. Because after all, who can better share their experience as the students if not the students themselves?
Hi, my name is Catalina Diaz. I'm a communications intern here at Roseville Environmental Utilities, and this is my second internship here at the department. At EU, I schedule social media posts across all of our platforms and respond to inquiries from residents. I also gather photos and video of our people in the field and at our various sites using the camera and drones. I assist with hosting and creating events, graphic design, and writing news stories. I love working on video projects and being part of a creative team, from planning to publishing. Working at this internship has given me real-world experience that I can carry into my career.
I'm excited to share the current accomplishment with the city council. This agreement has proven to be highly valuable, providing students with exceptional prospects to explore the city's extensive array of careers it encompasses. Throughout the 2022-2023 academic year, a total of six high school students have received a hands-on learning within their designated departments, facilitating their professional growth. Moreover, several departments have rehired their high school students into paid intern roles such as Catalina Diaz. This week, 10 new high school students started successfully their internship within various departments, further expanding the program's reach and impact. And now, I would like to turn it over to Terry Griffin to talk more about the current CTE programs that are available for students within the district.
Thank you. So this slide shows all of the career technical pathways that we have within the Roseville Joint Union High School District at our various schools. A CTE pathway consists of three to four classes that combine academic knowledge as well as career technical skills. So what we do in Roseville is allow our students, after completing two of these courses, to apply for an internship while hopefully continuing that program of study. We do things a little differently in that instead of placing students, we have our students submit a cover letter and a resume, they have to apply, and then go and interview. So our City of Roseville managers have been very involved in selecting their interns and making sure that we're placing a good fit. We currently have, oh, actually, I want to throw something else out there. We are dual-enrolled, so when our students are interning, they're earning college credit. It's actually a business course, Business 159 with Sierra College, so they are earning high school credit and college credit at the same time. We currently have 39 students out in the field, and our goal originally had been to have well over 100 by now. Due to the pandemic, a lot of our businesses are either working remotely or have shut down completely. So our efforts this year are to establish those new relationships. We are needing internships for students in culinary, health, engineering, computer science, media, graphic design, the gamut. So our goal this year is to try to grow by 25%. And then our second goal is to make sure that we are recruiting our low, I'm sorry, our special populations into our internship programs and into our CTE pathways. So we not only want to recruit our special populations, but make sure that we're retaining them and providing support for them.
Great, thank you, Terry. So if it is approved tonight by the city council, what is in store for next year? Currently, I'm working on communications for the departments who are interested in hosting students. We're planning to have at least 10 high school students for the spring 2024. In May 2023, the commendable achievements that I have just shared with the council have been recognized by the esteemed Judy Kelsey Memorial Fund, which has generously awarded the funding for the Human Resources intern role to develop a full-time summer internship program in partnership with the Roseville Joint Union High School District for the summer 2024. The core objective of this program would be to offer high school students an immersive internship that imparts practical skills and a comprehensive understanding of city services and career paths. It will also focus on direct bilingual outreach, as Terry mentioned, to diverse communities in Roseville, ensuring families who speak English as a second language like mine can recognize the program's value for their high school students and encourage them to apply. Currently, we're actively working on developing the summer internship program with a goal to host up to 30 students in June 2024. The applications for students will open in February, and all the departments that are interested in hosting a high school intern in June must submit the paperwork before January 15, 2024. Through these key efforts, the City of Roseville underscores its dedication to fostering inclusivity and maximizing the wide-ranging benefits of the internship program for all students, including the growing immigrant populations in the local area, while also advancing a key strategic objective of the council, engaging youth. This agreement with the Roseville Joint Union High School District effectively harmonizes students' formal education with abundant career opportunities within the city, uplifting the next generation of public service employees, and advancing the city's commitment to communities' future. I would like to also note that the internship placements, as detailed in the Cooperative Vocational Education Agreement, will not displace current city employees, nor will fill funded vacancies, nor result in performance of work otherwise performed by the city employee or position. Therefore, it is my pleasure to provide you with a staff recommendation for the city council to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative vocational education agreement with the Roseville Joint Union High School District. And also, I have included Terry's contact information alongside with mine, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there is any.
Very well, and a stellar presentation, first of all. So I'll ask if the council has any questions of the president. Councilman Albert?
I think that's a first, I believe, having a student present that. I was wondering if you could tell us just briefly what are some of the tasks that you do besides presenting to city council?
Oh, of course. I have been on a wide variety of tasks over the years. As Stacy mentioned, I have been working with the city since 2018, so I have done my fair share of recruitment processes that I assisted the team with. Right now, I'm mainly working on the case leave management, so anybody who's having a baby or having a surgery, I'm the one to contact them and help them explain the AFMLA and C4 protections alongside with the rest of them. And all the little tasks along the way that HR has to tackle, I'm always open to that and willing to learn.
Great, thank you for giving us an example.
Any other questions before I open it to public comment? All right, I'll open it to public comment, and I do expect the high school students here tonight to publicly comment. Okay, I'll close public comment and insist that the high school students share this information with their students. Unless the council has any other questions, we'll go ahead and have the clerk read the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 7.3, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23-339, approving a cooperative vocational education agreement by and between the City of Roseville and Roseville Joint Union High School District, and authorize the city manager to, I'm sorry, the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. If I can have a motion to approve, please?
A second?
We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Excellent presentation, thank you.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Recruit these high school students, okay? All right, our next item is item appointments, item 8.1 for the Board of Appeals, Local Sales Tax Citizens Oversight, Unscheduled Vacancy Appointments, and the city clerk will be making a presentation.
I am. I'm going to just be able to provide some information for the public. So, good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm Carmen Avalos, the city clerk for the City of Roseville. Tonight, this item comes before you as we have unscheduled vacancies for boards, commissions, and committees. So tonight, you have the opportunity to make appointments to the Board of Appeals, and this vacancy resulted due to a resignation on the Board of Appeals and comes before you after the regular biannual recruitment. The Local Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee is also an opportunity for the city council to appoint three individuals to this particular committee, and this came as a result of no one applying to our first round, our biannual recruitment process. We had zero applicants. And so that's why we currently have these unscheduled vacancies. For the Board of Appeals, we did receive six applicants, and the city council has the opportunity to select one member to fill the unexpired term which ends December 31, 2026. And for the Local Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee, the city council has an opportunity to appoint three members from the five applicants that submitted for a term expiring on June 30, 2027. So at this time, the recommendation is that the city council select and appoint members to fill these vacancies for the Board of Appeals and the Local Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee. Once the public has an opportunity to comment, we'll start our, the council already has the ballots at the dais, and we'll do our voting from there.
Great, I'll open it up for public comment if there are any of the applicants here who want to come forward. Or anyone who wants to comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and ask the city clerk to conduct the voting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So all of the council members do have their ballots. Again, this is for the Board of Appeals. We did have six applicants. Once you've made your selection, if you could please forward your ballots to me. Thank you.
Do the appeals first?
Yes, Board of Appeals first, correct. That is on the salmon color. Okay, so Board of Appeals, we have a, we have a vote for Ms. Luis Santiago by Councilmember Rucucci. Board of Appeals, we have a vote for Sherri Rutledge from Councilmember Mendonza. Scott Albert, Councilmember Albert has selected Robert Schmidt for the Board of Appeals. Vice Mayor Bernusconi has selected Robert Schmidt for
Vice Mayor Bernusconi has selected Robert Schmidt for this particular board. And Mayor Haldishel has selected Robert Schmidt. So with that, Mr. Mayor and City Council, we have three votes for Robert Schmidt, which is the highest vote getter, one vote for Louis Santiago, and one vote for Sherri Rutledge. With that, Mr. Robert Schmidt is the selection for the Board of Appeals. Next, we'll do our selection and voting for the Local Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee. You make your selection, and please send your ballot to me. Again, this is for the Local Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Board, I'm sorry, Committee. So we have a vote for Mr. Bob Betancourt, Jordan Banel, and Catherine Kitchell from Council Member Mendoza. Council Member Acucci has selected Bob Betancourt, Jordan Banel, and Catherine Kitchell. Council Member Albert has made a selection of Bob Betancourt, Jordan Banel, and Catherine Vice Mayor Bernusconi has selected Bob Betancourt, Brian Boyd, and Catherine Kitchell. And Mayor Haldishel has selected Bob Betancourt, Brian Boyd, and Catherine Kitchell. So the highest vote getter was Mr. Bob Betancourt with five votes. Second is Jordan Banel, I'm sorry, second is Catherine Kitchell with four votes, and three votes for Jordan Banel, two for Brian Boyd. With that, we have the opportunity to select three, so we have Bob Betancourt, Catherine Kitchell, and Jordan Banel, who were the highest vote getters, and those would be the three that get appointed.
Five votes.
Yeah, five votes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you did have five votes. So we still have Bob Betancourt with five, Catherine Kitchell with five, and Jordan Banel with three. They are still the three highest vote getters, and they will be the ones that will be selected for appointment. Thank you.
You to read the motion.
Thank you. With that, the City Council will appoint to the Board of Appeals Robert Schmidt. And for the Local Sales Tax Oversight Committee, the City Council will appoint, will appoint Bob Betancourt, Jordan Banel, and Catherine Kitchell to the Local Sales Tax Oversight Committee for the unexpired terms. If I can get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes, thanks very much. All right, next, we'll move on to public hearings, Agenda Item nine point one, Sierra Vista Specific Plan Parcel KT forty-one A and KT forty-one B, six thousand Baseline Road, Erickson Senior Living Development Agreement Amendment, Major Project Permit Stage One, Major Project Permit Stage Two, and Lot Light Adjustment. And let me make sure that I open the public hearing. We'll start off, and Mr. Bitter, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Haldishel, members of the City Council. Greg Bitter, Planning Manager with the Development Services Department, and I'm here tonight with Derek Ogden, Senior Planner, and Sean Morales, Associate Planner. And thank you for the introduction to this item, Mayor. I'm going to turn it right over to Sean to get the presentation going.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The fifty-six acre project site is located at six thousand Baseline Road on Parcels KT forty-one A and B within the Sierra Vista Specific Plan on the north side of Baseline between Westbrook and Santucci Boulevards. At full buildout, the development would consist of a two-point-one million square foot continuing care retirement community with approximately twelve-hundred independent living units, forty skilled nursing beds, and two hundred assisted living and memory care beds. The project request before you this evening is for a Development Agreement Amendment to memorialize the operations of the project and the electrical improvements needed. On July thirteenth, the Planning Commission approved a Major Project Permit Stage One for the overall development plan and a Major Project Permit Stage Two for the architecture and landscape of Phase One, as well as a lot line adjustment, and those approvals are contingent upon your approval tonight. The three main functions of the development are independent living units, memory care, and skilled nursing, which are consistent with two use types found in the zoning ordinance, community care facility and long-term care facility. Both community and long-term care are principally permitted in the general commercial zone, therefore Erickson Senior Living is a principally permitted use on the project site. However, it is only principally permitted as long as it operates as a community care facility licensed by the Department of Social Services, which requires that all residents, including independent living units, receive some level of medical care. Without medical care, the units will be considered a multifamily residential use, which is not permitted in the GC zone. The Baseline PNR Development Agreement is proposed to be amended to include a detailed operations and licensing plan to ensure compliance with the zoning. Additionally, due to the unique residential nature of the project, a section is proposed to be added to memorialize an affordable housing contribution fee the city and applicant negotiated that will be paid into the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This fee will be assessed on the habitable square footage of just the independent living units and will allow the city to provide financial assistance to other affordable housing projects in the future. The fee is estimated to total eight hundred thousand dollars for Phase One and about two-point-seven million dollars overall.
And I'm sorry, can you go over that again?
The numbers?
Yes, the amount.
The Phase One of the project, the fee will tabulate about eight hundred thousand dollars and overall two-point-seven million dollars.
Thank you.
Projected electric demand for buildout of the project exceeds the demand planned for Parcels KT forty-one A and B. However, Roseville Electric is able to service a site contingent on surrounding infrastructure upgrades. Phasing of the improvements, as shown on the slide, is outlined in a new DA section, and consistency with the plan will ensure that Roseville Electric can serve the residents of the site as well as the surrounding areas in a safe and orderly manner. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the general plan, specific plan, and the zoning ordinance, and the required findings can be made. An addendum to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan EIR was prepared for the project and determined that there were no new significant impacts beyond what was already anticipated in the EIR. Therefore, staff recommends that council take the actions listed on the slide, approving the project entitlements, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. And Mr. Bitter, before I ask the council if they have any questions, do you have any other presentation?
No, sir.
All right. I'll ask the council if they have any questions at this point in time.
So I see that there, to make it, to work with the independent living, there'll be a medical aspect to it, so that they'll have healthcare for them? Is that correct?
Yes, there's really three components. It's the assisted living, then, which is the, there's twelve-hundred units of typical assisted living, then they have a memory care facility, and then they'll actually have a skilled nursing facility, which will be a medical facility.
But I thought the first part were the ones that were independent had to have something.
Yeah, the independent living, it's really monitoring, and for the licensing program, it's like any independent living, they're on a monitoring program. I know the applicant is here tonight, and they might want to give us a little more detail on their program. But that was something that took us a while to get our hands wrapped around for the number of units they're proposing, but all of the residents that will eventually live in this project will have a monitoring, a program set up so that Erickson will be monitoring their health, will be, you know, making sure that they are active and being able to provide any assistance that anybody needs. Yeah. So it won't necessarily be medical assistance. Sometimes it'll just be, you know, typical day-to-day life activity assistance. Yeah. You can progress all the way through the different levels.
I understood the other, and I just didn't understand the beginning.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Albert, I'm sorry, Councilman Albert, not Mr. Albert. That's Mr. Bitter, your Councilman Albert, okay.
A question came up in the community, and I just wanted to ask it publicly. My understanding is this has, some of the buildings reach six stories in height, and that is allowable within this plan. Is that correct, or did they have to get a special permit or something to go for the extra height?
Really, the height, the way the municipal code is set up for commercial zones, there is a, fifty feet is the typical maximum height, but the height can be modified through the major project permit process. So the height was modified.
Through the Planning Commission?
Through the Planning Commission hearing, yeah.
Okay.
And we also, something that came up at the Planning Commission hearing, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up, is one thing we looked at, I know some of the neighbors to the north, the single-family homes to the north of this project site, were concerned about the height of the buildings and the view. And if we want, I think we probably have a slide with the site plan, but we tried our best to orient the buildings so that the narrower portions of the buildings are facing the single-family lots, so you don't have these long building facades facing, yeah. You can see on the slide, on the right-hand side, where there's a building that looks like an upside-down T, you have just a very narrow portion, and then the building next to it, a very, a fairly narrow portion. As you go further to the west, the buildings are set back further, or they're across the street from parks and schools.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? I'll open it up for public comment. I hope the applicant will come forward and share with us their vision.
Good evening. I'm Chris Stewart on behalf of Erickson Senior Living.
Could you lean into the microphone?
I will. Good evening. I'm Chris Stewart on behalf of Erickson Senior Living, and Steve Montgomery from Erickson Senior Living in Baltimore has joined us tonight, and we can answer your questions about the project. Appreciate staff's help getting us here. Thank you. Thank you for your help.
This is ambulatory and non-ambulatory, right, in that facility?
Both.
Well, thank you.
What's your estimated date of opening?
I'm going to let Steve talk about all that soon.
Excuse me. Good evening. Steve Montgomery, Erickson Senior Living, Baltimore, Maryland. We appreciate, you know, all of your hard work and, again, working with staff on this project for the last eighteen months. In terms of our timing, we just actually had a meeting earlier today with staff to discuss the next steps in the permitting process. We anticipate beginning that later this fall. We've got some significant design work to do as well behind that for the first phase that was described earlier in the presentation. Looking at the big picture right now, we hope to begin sales efforts on the property about a year and a half from now, and then sometime optimistically in early twenty-five, we would hopefully begin construction on the first phase of that, of the project as described, which would be focusing on the independent living units. And from there, our high-level estimations are it'll probably takes about two years to get that first phase open and start moving residents in. So it's a rather lengthy process at this point, excuse me, but we're very excited to get this thing kicked off and going.
Yeah, if I might ask you, how many, how long has Erickson been around, and how many facilities do you have?
Erickson has been in business since forty years. Just this past year, we celebrated fortieth anniversary of our first community, which is in suburbs of Baltimore, Maryland, Catonsville, Maryland, and we are currently operating twenty-three communities in twelve states around the country.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Montgomery while he's here? All right. I do want to make a comment, though I do want to thank you, affordable housing. I mean, it doesn't matter which coast you're on, I think affordable housing is a significant issue, and thanks for recognizing that and including in this development agreement a fee that will help with the affordable housing issue because, yeah, because some of your workers may or may not be, you know, that there's a connectivity between the people you'll hire and housing affordability, so I want to thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you.
See you guys again.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comments? I'll close the public hearing, and I'll inquire if the council has any other questions or comments before I ask the clerk to read the motion.
I just want to ask a question.
Sorry, would you come forward? Call me out on that before. Sorry, is this on this matter?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to ask you a quick question.
Well, that was during public comment, so I'm going to...
On this, on this particular project, but that's okay.
On this particular project, you would like to make a comment?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Okay.
But that's not okay.
Open public comment. I'm going to reopen public comment, allow you to ask.
I was just going to ask.
Come forward.
Loretta Lazlo with Gilbane Construction. I was just going to ask about the actual selection of a general contractor and using local subcontractors and local workforce considerations.
Okay. Not something we can make a business decision about, but thanks for your comment.
Great, thank you so much.
One more, the final public comment before I close public comment and close the public hearing, and ask the council if they have anything else before I ask the clerk to read the motion.
I'm good.
All right, we're good. We'll take a motion.
Thank you. On item nine point one, the City Council will consider the eleventh addendum to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report, EIR, and adopting the five findings of fact and introducing for a first reading an ordinance of the council of the City of Roseville adopting a third amendment of the Development Agreement by and between the City of Roseville and KV Sierra Vista LLC relative to the Sierra Vista Specific Plan, and authorizing the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. If I can have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with a second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishel.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Get the shovels out. All right, our next item is nine point two, infill parcel one seventy, one seventy-five, rezone, and I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Haldishel, members of the City Council. This item is a rezone of a parcel. It's infill parcel one seventy-five. This is where the station, former restaurant nightclub, currently resides. And again, I have Derek Ogden with me tonight, and Shelby Maples will be doing the presentation. So I'll turn it over to Shelby.
Thanks, Shelby.
Greg, and thank you, Mayor Haldishel and council members. The subject parcel is located at eleven hundred Orlando. The site is currently occupied by a vacant restaurant building comprised of a building and some relocated train cars. The freeway on-ramp to I eighty is located to the north of the site. Auburn Boulevard is to the west, and Orlando Avenue borders the site to the south and east. There are commercial properties that are to the south and east, and a residential subdivision that's further east of Orlando. The request before you this evening includes that request to rezone the one-point-two-three acre property from neighborhood commercial to community commercial. As part of the project, the Planning Commission approved a design review permit to construct a car wash facility with vacuum stalls, parking, and other site improvements, as well as a conditional use permit to allow that proposed car wash in the community commercial zone, that request being contingent upon council's action. That portion of the request was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission on June twenty-second, 2023, as well as a recommendation that the City Council approve the rezone. The project proposes the rezone from neighborhood commercial to community commercial to allow the car wash with the conditional use permit. Neighborhood commercial zones are intended to be in close proximity to residential uses and provide neighborhood-serving uses versus community commercial, which is a broader commercial designation. The site is relatively isolated, particularly from pedestrians, and it's bordered by Auburn, Orlando, and I eighty. And while there is residential to the east, there are community commercial parcels that are between eleven hundred Orlando and the homes. So modifying the zoning for the site would make it consistent with the adjacent property, and the Planning Commission found that the car wash use and design was appropriate for the site. Therefore, the Planning Commission recommended that the City Council approve the request to rezone. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared to evaluate the proposed project. With mitigation in the event of an unintended discovery of tribal cultural resources, project impacts were found to be less than significant. There was a twenty-day public review for the document in May of this year. At the Planning Commission on June twenty-second, the Planning Commission adopted the initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring... study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program, as well as the design review permit and conditional use permit. There was no public comment on the project, and they also recommended approval of the rezone. Early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on February 15th, 2023, though there were, no one, no one attended the meeting. A notice of the Planning Commission and city council hearings were published in the Press Tribune, distributed to property owners within 300 feet, and posted on the website, and to date, no comments have been received. Therefore, the project is consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance general plan and community design guidelines, and the required findings of fact can be made. And the Planning Commission recommends that the city council consider the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and adopt the findings of fact and introduce for first reading an ordinance adopting the rezone. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Counsel, if they have any questions. Councilman, Vice Mayor Bernusconi first.
Thank you for this, Shelby. It's crazy to think that how problematic this property has been in the past, that no one came out to make any comments on it. So with the rezone, the current status of the station, so does it, does the property go for sale? Is this new operator, how does that work? Is the new operator buying it?
It's already in the ownership of the person who's applied for this project.
Okay, all right. I think it's a much better use for that site. Thank you for your work on this. That's all I have.
Councilman Albert.
The residential that's across, behind the commercial, were they within the 300 feet for notification?
Yes, and I did speak with one neighbor who told me about the history of the site, but he didn't provide comment on the project.
Just my concern, I know sometimes the 300 feet isn't always adequate for informing people sometimes.
That one row of homes was, was all within 300 feet.
Excellent, thank you.
So, Rakucci?
Yeah? I have a couple of questions. I'm also familiar with how terrible of a property that's been, but that, the way that property is set up, there's two driveways, as you're aware of. One going off of Orlando, as you're across the street from the Texas West Barbecue, and the other one, which would take you, you can make a left or a right going out to Riverside. My concern was with the Orlando transfer station there, you've got a middle, a yellow broken line lane that currently exists, so if you were to get off on the freeway and go straight, you have the Orlando transfer station on your right, you have the existing station on your left, you have a divided line where you would be able to turn into the old station. Is that going to be amended? My concern is, the way the Orlando transfer station is set up, the way the buses exit would come back onto that street and have to make a hard right or a left, if you have cross traffic coming out of that one driveway from the car wash, I could see where that could, that could create some problems.
So that southwestern driveway that's there that you're discussing, that is going to be closed off for emergency vehicle access only?
Okay, so will that then, so then the other driveway then will still be a left or right?
I believe...
Want a cross from the barbecue restaurant?
Is that all the way up there?
That's gonna be on Orlando.
Yeah, that one would still allow full turning movements from that driveway.
Okay. And then the other question was, do we have a slated time? I know there's, I saw there was transfer of ownership of the property for this project to move forward, because there isn't, two existing tenants in there right now. I just want to make sure that they are able to relocate or have received notice of this.
I know the applicant is here tonight. I don't believe there are tenants on that property.
Capital City Catering's in there.
When we opened it for public comment, was the applicant?
It's my understanding that the current property owner who's been leasing the property is, is also...
Chambers had it up until last month, unless he's moved on, but he was in there as of last month.
All right, we'll cover that under public comment. Shelby, I did want to follow up on Councilman Albert's comment. So did you meet with the Curbside Neighborhood Association? I think that's the one that usually meets at the Skate Town.
We did not meet with the Neighborhood Association.
Oh, okay, I, I read neighborhood meeting, and I put association in there on February 15th, but you had a neighborhood meeting, nobody attended, okay.
Yeah, we sent notices out to the nearby, nearby residential.
Okay.
And invited them. We didn't, we didn't go to a neighborhood meeting. We tried to invite folks to a specific meeting for this project.
In addition, we also posted, posted our notice to the Arcona website and reached out to them.
Yeah, I know when I went to the Curbside Neighborhood Association meeting at Skate Town, you know, they, they were pretty knowledgeable about the area. They were concerned about White Avenue and the condition there and other things, so I assume that if they had concern, they would have been engaged, because you put it on Arcona. All right, hello?
Mayor, I still had questions.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I didn't want you, I didn't want you to, I wanted to hear from the business owner on your questions as well.
One other question, I know we mentioned the Arcona and the 300 feet to the residence, but did we speak to any of the business or commercial, which would be directly adjacent to the site on, across the street, that'd be to the, across the street and to the left?
I think many of the surrounding businesses that were within 300 feet got notice of both the meeting that we held, the neighborhood meeting, as well as these public meetings.
Come out at all?
No.
Okay, just curious. All right, thank you very much.
My apologies for cutting you off there. All right, well, we'll open it up for public comment, invite the applicant to be part of that public comment.
Yeah, my name is Lane Travis, and I am one of the owners of the property, along with Jesse Angeles. And he is, we do have people in there, Capital City Catering, but they are there, not even as a tenant, but just to utilize, to make sure the place is occupied, because it, one of the problems with it has been the homeless and, and break-ins. They've been break-ins while they've been there. They are on a 30-day notice. And I spoke actually with, this morning, I spoke with Dwight Chambers, who is head of Capital City Catering, and he's fully in agreement, would like to stay, because he has all the equipment inside, and, but he said if it comes down, and pending your decision, he's ready to, ready to move, and then we have the relocating the railcars and changing the use.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for working with, with him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? I'll close public comment, inquire of the council. If the council doesn't have any additional questions or comments, I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion.
Did you close public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, close the public hearing, yeah, right there, in red.
Thank you.
I'm skipping over a lot of lines tonight.
Thank you. On item 9.2, the council will consider the infill parcel 175, be shine car wash mitigated negative declaration, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and adopting the two findings of fact and introduce for a first reading an ordinance of the city council of Roseville, amending zoning ordinance number 5428 of the city of Roseville, changing the zoning of certain real property located within the city of Roseville. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldeshelt.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right. We're at the portion of the evening where we will take, we'll have our second public comment period on, on agenda items, so this is the opportunity, and I know this is, this is Wood Creek here, is it Wood Creek there? So this is your opportunity for, to comment on agenda items. Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying. Civic engagement, all right. I'll, we will close that opportunity for public comment. Ask the city manager if he has...
Any further reports, mayor?
City attorney, any further reports?
For me, thank you.
All right, I'll invite the council members to report on any activities. We'll start with Councilwoman Rakucci.
Okay, thank you, mayor. I went to my flood control and water conservation district meeting this week, and mainly what they do is make sure that we have all our, our gauges work, and that we're in a good position if we have any problems with flooding, and the, and looking in the future for other mitigations that we may have to need in the future. So we had a meeting, and that's what we discussed. What was interesting, though, is we had a lot of our members, board members who, who came, and ones that we haven't seen for a long time, and there's a lot more people in this new group of members that have come in, so that was kind of exciting. Also, yesterday was back-to-school night for many schools, elementary schools, I'm not sure of high schools here in Roseville. I went to my grandson's with Bojahn, and I, I'm surprised it was hot, and there were so many people. It almost looked like high school gradu, or mid-school graduation, there were so many cars and people there, which was exciting. I think they went around and, and got to really understand the programs that the kids were in and asked questions. And they actually went into what kind of books and what, what they were doing in different classes, so I think it really was, really enlightening for parents and feeling a little bit more comfortable, and grandparents, I was a grandparent, of what it was like for their child to go back to school. And that's it.
All right, Councilmember Maldonza.
I have no updates, mayor, thank you.
All righty, Councilmember Albert.
Quite a few meetings this last time, nothing super big to report out on the air push and patrol district, or the landfill, or the Sacramento Air Basin, but got to do a couple fun things. Joined many of our council members at the community picnic, celebrating Royer Park, the new playground, and it was really fun to meet the gentleman who designed the original playground and got to design this one, that was kind of cool. Went on another tour of Penumbra as part of our EDAC assignments. We go out and we visit some of the top employers in the city, and, you know, just find out how they're doing, how we can help them. And I joined Rob Klein and our Melissa Anguiano from the Economic Development Department. Let's see, attended neighborhood meetings, Creekview, West Park, and Fittament. Joined one of them at the Placer County Office of Education to talk about, there's a small neighborhood section that has to travel a long ways to get to a school, so went out there and just supported them on that to let it go to vote for them. And a bunch of us were at the Placer County Elections Office opening, so now we have something closer, so we have to go up to Auburn, those involved in the elections office or the clerk recorder to get official documents and things. It's kind of nice to have something closer where the population's located. And then it was exciting, many of us got to see the new 24-hour fitness business, and that was a lot of excitement, a lot of anticipation, a lot of question whether it was really going to come. And I know they're going to be hosting about 10,000 memberships, possibly more. Luckily, they're not all there at the same time, although it did look like it this weekend, that they were all there at the same time, but that should thin out a little bit, kind of like after the holidays. Anyway, so congratulations to 24-Hour Fitness, we're glad you're in our city. Our city loves being healthy. That's it.
All right, Vice Mayor Bernusconi.
Hey, thank you, you guys have covered a lot of the things that we've been to in the last couple days. I just wanted to let everyone know that there will be an official grand opening of Nicole G. Drive, our Roseville native who lost her life a couple years ago in, in Kabul. It will be August 28th at 9:00 a.m., around the corner of Westbrook and Nicole G. Drive. And I know the city had just started putting out information about that. The public is invited to attend, so if you're interested, I would look on the city's website or social channels so that you get an idea of exactly where to park for the event, because not all those roads connect yet. I want to thank our police chief, for his time yesterday, I was there for a couple hours. He gave me an update on the real-time crime center expansions for our police department, the range, and their mobile command center, the new vehicle that is used by both police and fire. And just a question that actually I forgot to ask our city manager when we met yesterday, just, and I'm glad I see fire here, too, but since we last met, there have been several fires in our Greenbelt area, north of Blue Oaks, around Parkside, and I know that some of the private properties were supposed to be cleared by the end of June or July, and so I'm just curious if that had any sort of role in, in the fire, because one of those came up almost to the door of one of, one of the parcels that are on the trail, and we can talk about offline, but I just think it's important that we are reinforcing the cutting down of vegetation, especially what we're seeing in Maui, unfortunately. I, we all thought that that probably couldn't happen there, and we think maybe it won't happen here, but it did become pretty close to some neighbors, so.
Vice Mayor, I just mentioned, though, because I think it's important, all of our fire breaks were put in, and there were no violations of lots that didn't have what was supposed to be mowed, mowed, but there are still dry spots and open areas of turf that are allowed to grow, but all the fire breaks were installed.
Okay, thank you for that. That's all I have, and I expect that our mayor is going to cover information about his state of the city in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of things, as Councilwoman Albert mentioned, there was a commu- unity picnic, but prior to that, we were all there for the rededication of, or the opening of the Royer Park, the refurbished playground that day. I'll be at SACOG tomorrow. SACOG is going on the road, so in April, they were here in, in Roseville for a Placer County local. Tomorrow, we'll be in Marysville in, in Yuba County. Next week, the Placer Arts Council will celebrate their 40th anniversary. Next week, PCTPA is there. This Friday, will be the service for Robert Dugan's mother at St. Rose's at 10:00, so I imagine some of us will be there. And yes, preparations are underway. If I, we're getting, we're finalizing preparations for State of the City, which is Friday, August 25th, in Inside, at Center Court of the Westfield Galleria, and part of the, part of the event that day will be a recognition of, of our nonprofits, including Roseville Police Activities League, Roseville City School Foundation, Tommy Apostolus, the Taylor House, and why did I just miss one? But there will be five nonprofits, so ARPAL, oh, Friends of the Public Library, yeah, so those five Roseville-centric nonprofits will be there that day, and, and we've, we're about over 200, I think, in attendance. There will be preceded by VIP breakfast, and the Chef Q. Bennett will be, will be preparing breakfast. There are two omelet stations there. It's gonna be a delicious start to the day, and, yeah, I, yeah, I think that's, that's it. I'm in the final, final edits of my seven-minute, now I don't know what it's gonna be, but anyway, I'm looking forward to it, because we do have a lot to recognize, a lot to appreciate, and a lot to celebrate here in the city, so I look forward to that. And our, I think, unless there's anything else, we'll be adjourned till our first meeting in September, which is September...
September 6.
September 6. So thank you, everybody.